Good afternoon, colleagues. The Minat Chantai Cinco de las Lauter en Guam is back from recess. Before we broke, I allowed the author of the legislation to go ahead and to address the body, to make sure that we got the right version in, and then to go ahead and close on the motion. So Assistant Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sina Maasi Maskehalu. So yes, the bill that is uploaded onto our shared drive, it is as substituted, and when I introduced it, I referred to it as substituted, but in answering the other senator's question, I did use the term amended, but it was, to be consistent, that it was the as substituted version. So it should consistently be available as substituted for everyone.
Senator Marsha, if I may, I just want to make sure, did anybody else want to speak on the main motion? On the main motion, I apologize, Assistant Majority Leader, I will allow Senator Lee on the main motion.
Sudus Massey, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, colleagues, and belated happy birthday to Senator Mary Torres. I did want to rise, Madam Speaker, in support of all of the author's efforts to improve our Department of Parks and Recreation to include this substitute bill, 426-35COR. Madam Speaker, this measure brings clarity and consistency to how government leaders are appointed by removing a unique process that kind of singled out the Department of Public or the Director of DPR, and Bill 426 will apply the same process that other semi-autonomous gov Guam entities like the Guam Economic Development Authority abide by today. And by streamlining and standardizing this leadership search for the DPR Director, we can bring our focus back to more important things. And Madam Speaker, you know, and colleagues, you know that, you know, this entire term and even before, I've been a staunch advocate of the repair and replacement of our municipal pools. Because as someone who has watched the many multiple oversight hearings that was held by the author of this measure, as we all know, the revolving door of DPR Directors has really led to these problems being even more drawn out. And with an unavoidable learning curve really hindering our progress as a department and as a community, each time a new leader takes the helm, it feels like we were starting from scratch, starting from square one. And DPR should be taking this time. While it isn't safe to fully operate, I know that the governor has lifted some restrictions on pools and recreational facilities, and we certainly want to be as safe as possible. We know that construction will take some time to complete, but we, I'm really hoping that DPR should be taking this time to find a solution once and for all. And Madam Speaker, I hope, I can only hope that in 2021, the next Oversight Chairperson can show the same dedication to this incredibly important community resource, not just the pool, but you know, a real focus on our parks, our beaches, the bathroom situation that we've all heard and seen time and time again in the news media. You know, especially our pools, you know, they're the training grounds for our future Olympians. They are what many in our community who have disabilities or even are Manomko use to maintain their fitness and their wellness. And it's really the key to a very healthy and active life for so many of these folks, so many of our seniors and many in our community, Madam Speaker. And it's really the source of joy for a lot of our children with special needs. And so I feel that passing this measure will allow the next Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to get off the starting block faster and dive headfirst into this important public service role, including the operating and maintaining of our municipal swimming pools. And so again, Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this measure. I thank the author for her work. I know she worked very closely with our legal bureau to bring this to the floor. And I certainly hope that the governor's next appointment with the confirmation, the advice and consent of this August body, that we'll be able to have a, again, a more thorough and streamlined process in selecting a leader at this very important agency. Sudus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Well, that's Senator Lee. Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Senator Marchach, now you make lose.
Sina Maasi Maskehalu. And I appreciate the points that were brought forward. It's really true. The Department of Parks and Recreation is such an important entity in so many ways. It's where we spend our time, it's where we have our family weddings many times, it's maybe where we have birthday parties. So much of our lives are celebrated actually at the beaches and parks and so forth. And it seems that in working with them, that maybe there are many outside who kind of just think that it's an agency that mows the lawn in a few areas and that's it, but it's really so much more than that. And it's important that we continue to find every way we can to provide them the tools and the support that they need to attend to our community in the way that our community deserves. And so I appreciate the shared concern that the members of this body have had this last term as well in continuing to have that oversight and make sure to give them support where it is possible. So as mentioned, this bill is one of those tools that we can give them to speed up the process, to make the process more streamlined, to have it be consistent with others, so that we can get the Department of Parks and Recreation Director into place, hopefully as soon as possible. And it was really important to me to keep the legislative concurrence in there because it is such an important entity and because it has struggled for years and years, if not decades in many ways. It's important for us to be able to have a role and make sure that we too are looking at those directors' skills and qualities that they are bringing with them to make sure that they can adequately manage and handle, in my assessment, one of the larger mandates that any department has. And so I appreciate the support that's been shared here. Again, I just ask for my colleague's support in allowing for this clarification to occur in this bill and to clear up that confusion that took up a lot of our time and attention over these last two years. Sudus Massey.
On the motion, Assistant Majority Leader, to put it in the voting file?
Yes, and so with that, I motion to place Bill number, let me call it back up again.
426.
Yeah, Bill 426-35COR into the voting file.
On that motion to move Bill number 426-35COR to the voting file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing, none. Motion carries. Before we go on to the next bill, which is Bill number 269-35COR, again, I would like to extend a very, very special happy birthday to Senator Mary Camacho Torres, as she celebrates a very special day. Happy birthday on behalf of your colleagues. Happy birthday. Yeah. Beautiful flowers. Senator Jim Moylan, you are recognized on Bill numbers 269-35COR.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I feel this day is even more special now. Thank you for that. Madam Speaker, I wish to place Bill number 269-35COR as amended by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime Transportation, Power and Energy Utilities, and Emergency Response, as introduced by myself, which is an act to add Article 9 to Chapter 77, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the repair and rehabilitation of the Southern High School Auditorium into third reading file, Madam Speaker. And I wish to discuss.
Senator Jim Moylan, on that motion, I will allow you to discuss. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as we know, Southern High School Auditorium is really a beacon of pride for the southern region of Guam. Many of us have experienced in its heydays how beautiful it once was. And it has, and it still has the potential of perpetuation of the arts in our culture. And Southern High School Auditorium unfortunately has been unusable for years due to a broken air conditioning system. It's very unfortunate. In fact, the doors of the auditorium are even padlocked. What was once a fine place to rehearse different plays and activities and cultural dances, they're now doing in the hallways and outside and wherever they can find space, but not within the auditorium. It is no longer a beacon of pride, Madam Speaker. But there is a solution, and that's with a public-private partnership, with tax credits spread over two-year period, $500,000 per year, with GIDEA behind us and shall manage this program, which they have done with many other similar tax credit programs. And GIDEA has even provided us testimony on how helpful this will be and how it will work. And thousands and thousands, thousands of the Southern High School students will eventually be able to benefit with the usage of this facility once again. In addition to the students, this can also expand into the community entities as well, as we've heard during testimonies during the public hearing for this bill. And this is, this act will accomplish many benefits prioritizing the perpetuation of the arts and our culture, and most importantly, our youth. Madam Speaker, I also like to bring my colleagues' attention to the amended version of this bill, which is on the drive, and I'll be happy to share that in our, in a chat group if we're unable to find it. But just to highlight what was amended in this bill, and that's based on GIDEA's testimony that they provided to us. First off, GIDEA did, was happy to be invited, and they did present their testimony in addition to written testimony as well, which was dated December 2, 2020. Overall, GIDEA does see the value in this legislation. And throughout the years, they talked about the tax credit programs that have been effective use to provide much-needed capital to vitality needed in facilities and infrastructures throughout our island. Fostering the public-private partnerships such as tax credit programs had the potential to enhance the quality of life for the people of Guam. And the goal of Bill 269-35, if and when achieved, will do just that. They did make a few points during the public hearing to strengthen the bill. And the first point, which we did in the amended version, they pointed out, GIDEA pointed out that these funds do not have to be provided upfront, and that's item number one on their recommendation. And they also highlighted that all documentation such as payments by the companies is then provided to GIDEA by the organization or agency for processing the tax credit certificates or memos. These tax credit certificates or memos are what the companies use to access tax credits at the Department of Revenue and Taxation. It would be more accurate to state that the tax credits allow companies to cover approved costs of various government-sanctioned projects, providing them an avenue to offset their contributions against their business-privileged tax liabilities. So item number one that GIDEA recommended is found on the amended version in committee, that's page five, line 13 through 15. So page five, line 13 to 15 addresses the first recommendation by GIDEA to improve the law. Item number two by GIDEA was that they wanted to include language to authorize the replacement of the air condition if it is deemed beyond repair. And then additionally, they all suggest that language be included that states that if any tax credits remain after satisfactorily completing the items one and two, that credits may be utilized to support other repair and rehabilitation products, projects of the Otherwise, without this language, additional legislation will be needed to authorize other repair and rehabilitation projects if desired. So that, too, Madam Speaker, item number two was also amended in the bill, which you can find on page three, items 12 through, I'm sorry, line 12 to 13, and also lines 14 to 19 to address what GIDEA requested. Then there was a few other recommendations by GIDEA, which is, number three is the effective date. So the original bill said immediately upon enactment, but GIDEA felt that this would prevent the two-year authorization period for tax credits and the legislation for lapsing due to lack of repair and rehabilitation plan. So GIDEA was concerned that it takes time for those that wish to bid for this project to come up with the plan. So rather than delay the time period of two years to include the wording where upon the plan being completed, and the correction was made in the bill on page seven, line four to six. And then the next one, item number four, talked about the tax credit program and that GDOE is responsible with regards to the tax credit program. This includes ensuring that copies of all required documents are submitted to GIDEA, providing necessary reports, updates, and paying required annual fees as outlined in approved GIDEA tax credit rules and regulations. That, too, was adjusted in the original version, the now amended version, on page six, line six to eight. And then the final recommendation by GIDEA, number five, was regarding Department of Education, in coordination with GIDEA, that Department of Education will have the regulatory oversight and the authority to approve the repair and rehabilitation plan of Southern High School Auditorium. It should be clear that GDOE and the owner of the property and the main, as the owner of the property and the main beneficiary, shall be responsible for all aspects of repair and rehabilitation plan, obtaining price quotations pursuant to the applicable procurement rules, regulations, and laws, and program marketing. GIDEA's sole role is to process tax credit requests and to ensure that such requests are in conformance with the laws applicable to rules and regulations. And that, that final recommendation, item number five, was made to the bill, which is page five, item 21 and 23, as Madam Speaker. Next, I also like to just make reference to the fiscal note of this bill, which was provided as well. So the fiscal note recognizes that the bill will authorize BBT tax credits for the funds that are not already pledged for any of, for any purpose to the Guam law. The amount of available tax credits shall not exceed 1 million of credits against the unplugged business tax, with limitations of 500,000 in tax credits issued per year up to two years. And then the fiscal note also discussed that per the Guam economic, per GIDEA, the passage of the legislation will require additional man-hours per week by its compliance division, which oversees the tax credit program. And GIDEA also recommends the following. The legislation should include the requirement that any entity receiving tax credit be subject to a fee as enumerated in the tax credit program rules and regulations for doing this. And the effective date should be after the approved design and renovation of Southern High School Auditorium. And the legislation be clear that GIDEA is the sole administrator of the tax credit program, and Guam Department of Education would lead the regulatory oversight approval and marketing of the improvements. To basically charge somebody, a company that was trying to get some tax credits to provide the service, well, first off, Madam Speaker, whoever or whenever this is, if implemented, that company is still paying their taxes. It's, it's just a matter of they're not paying their taxes to the Treasury of Guam, they're paying their taxes for the purpose of Southern High School Auditorium. So they, they do pay their taxes, but to ask a company to pay more in a fee to do that, I think that's unreasonable. But for the other two effects, we, we've already addressed that in, in the amendment that we made to this. And the tax share, Madam Speaker, I can try to highlight some of this information, but basically, income tax share, which we'll be paying in April of 2021, is for a tax period of January through December of 2020. Our, our budget that we set for FY 2021 is not affected by this period. So it doesn't interfere with what we projected to do with our budget we already discussed for FY 2021. Next, Madam Speaker, I just wanted to highlight a little of the testimony by the Superintendent of Education, John Hernandez. And he testified in support of Bill 269 with the $1 million that they say is approximately what it's going to cost to remove outdated chill water system, installation of multiple package units, and replace it with installation of multiple package units sufficient to cool the facility and provide redundancy to ensure the continued cooling of the facility, so that in the event of one of these units temporarily is out of commission, it can be done without shutting down the entire place. This will include the installation of new duct system associated with each new unit. And then the superintendent wanted to emphasize that due to the fact that GDOE's budget has been reduced approximately 30 million since 2018, and in light of many of the other maintenance needs that exist in the school, the agency does not currently have $1 million available to dictate to this project. In addition, the government's overall borrowing challenges have limited the ability of GDOE to leverage the bond market as a source of capital improvement funds for the projects such as these. He goes further to say that Southern High School Auditorium is just one of the many capital improvement projects requiring attention. And as the committee is, as we're aware, GDOE is currently managing and the design of new Simon Sanchez High School, which eventually will be financed under a multiple lease with private developer as authorized by law. And once Simon Sanchez High School is addressed, four of GDOE's six high schools will be maintained under a public-private lease agreement, leaving just George Washington High School and Southern High School as the two largest schools in need of continuing maintenance and renovation. The superintendent really feels like to address these types of facility needs, the government typically issues bonds to help finance a favorable interest rate. What are essentially long-term investments for school facilities that are expected to last for an additional 30 to 50 years. However, due to the government's borrowing cap and the tenuous revenue situation, it's unlikely that GDOE facilities will be able to access the necessary long-term resources to address our needs. Instead, GDOE has asked to pay as you go in order to fund important projects, which makes it difficult to fund the higher-priced repairs of one school as opposed to spreading available resources to cover multiple projects at several schools. We continue to ask that the government of Guam work to identify and secure long-term funding stream for GDOE facility improvements, which would then allow GDOE to leverage to commit funds in order to maximize funding availability and pay back the funds over a longer period of time. He closes basically that they do have a long-term plan. They're going to look at all their facilities and so forth, but, but this long-term plan won't be till November of 2021. And after the plan is submitted, where is the funding going to come from? We don't know. So that's why he, the superintendent sees these types of bills, especially 269, as an alternative for them to address these situations. So, Madam Speaker, we also have supporting documents from, from the mayor of Santa Rita, and he really sees this, he saw Southern High School, which was established since 1997 for, for the high school students. And that, that school was supposed to be for, for the students of Santa Rita, Aggett, Assin, Inerahan, Maritzo, Yumatic, Peti, Talafofo, and Jonja, which with the enrollment would approximately be almost 1,700 students. But the school needs help, and the private partnership will provide the enterprise necessary to repair and renovate the auditorium and air conditioning system, which is in dire need of action. The fact that the school's student population is not attending classes at the school at this time provides an opportunity for the air conditioning company to come in and make the repairs and renovations with little or no interruption in students or their classes. He further states that it's a shame that the state of, the state of an art auditorium, which costs the people of Guam thousands, if not millions, in taxpayers' dollars to build, has been allowed to sit and riddle with mold because of the lack of an air condition. So it's the hope of the mayor that Bill 269 will be passed and the entire legislative body, and the governor of Leon Guerrero will assign the bill into law so that work on the air conditioning system at the auditorium of Southern High School may be completed before students return to the classrooms. Madam Speaker, that's just a brief summary of the bill, and I'm looking forward to discussion and a favorable response by my colleagues. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Jim. On the main motion, Senator Munia, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I rise in support of this bill. I have utilized in the performing arts, the Southern High School Auditorium, and also have been at least a patron for some of the shows that they have had there. Prior to the air conditioning even going down, it definitely is a southern gem. And I guess with any gem, it really does need some care. And then I've also been a part of it when the air conditioning system was down and it was, it was not comfortable at all. So I really want to thank the author for looking for solutions to bring this gem back up and running again, if not just for the school, but also for the entire island, for the performing arts. And I thank him for working with GIDEA to really strengthen this bill so that it's a win-win situation for everyone. I do have a, just, just a little suggestion, just reading through some of the verbiage of the bill and noticing that there is, and maybe it's, maybe it's not even significant, but the word molding in there actually could, could mean something different. So maybe he might, I, if I can make a suggestion to, to change the words to maybe mold growth rather than molding, because in my early days of drafting, molding meant a decorative thing, something up on top of the ceiling. So maybe he might want to, you know, he might want to just change the words, the word molding to mold growth. That would just be my only suggestion. But otherwise, Madam Speaker, I'm in full support of this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Speaker, can you come up?
Madam Speaker, you are recognized.
I'm Duncan Luna Sudus Massey, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of Bill 269-35. Last year during this time, I did take a chance to visit the Southern High School to recruit some of their students to join our Legislative Public Policy Institute. And as I look back to when Southern High was first built, from my research, the home of the Dolphins, when it was first opened, if I'm not mistaken, was one of the largest schools in the island, if not even just the island, but within the country. And the Dolphins proudly boasted the largest campus in the country, so, and it broke my heart to see the state that it is in. And as the previous speaker rose in the efforts of support, I too had the chance to frequent the auditorium a lot and have a lot of the gifted and talented students and other nonprofits perform in that auditorium. And it literally breaks my heart to see that it literally should be, be worked on and repaired. And I want to say, Madam Speaker, I truly And I want to say, Madam Speaker, I truly support public-private partnerships, whether it be for this Southern High, or for soccer fields, or even revitalizing the Harmon Industrial Park that has, I want you to know, Madam Speaker, that this has proven to work in our community. And this allows us to invest in our children and give them a facility that they rightfully deserve and something that we can be very proud of. And for these reasons, Madam Speaker, I would like to commend the good author for this measure. And I hope that my colleagues too stand here today to support this measure as well. And hopefully he'll give me the opportunity to be a part of this sponsorship. But in that area, Madam Speaker, I just, I rise in support of 269-35 COR, the home of the Dolphins, truly deserve to have this happen for them. Sign him off.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Sonaga Senior, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the bill, but I do have an amendment. And from many of my colleagues, I was part of the Board of Education, Guam Education Policy Board. So for familiarity, sense of the word, I visited Southern High more than once, several times in the six years that I served with the education board. We found a way to fix the auditorium. We got it fixed, and then it broke down. We got it fixed, and it broke down. And we just couldn't figure out how to get ahead on that. On the last term, I visited the auditorium. We found out that it was the air condition. Same thing that the author is trying to do with this bill, and found out that it was a defect. Why didn't it get fixed? I don't know. But I do rise in support of the bill. The only, I do have an amendment, Madam Speaker, and then maybe if I could recognize that.
Yes, please introduce your amendment.
All right, thank you. The amendment is found on the drive, and all I'm asking for on the amendment is that on page three, that it'll read on line 22 to 23, "within the Southern High School Auditorium, comma, then they move on to the gym, if there's any funds left, the football field and the swimming pool." And the reason why I bring those areas up is that for many of you that may not be familiar with Southern High, Southern High School is a 3,000-student capacity. They built the swimming pool down there to use it for possible Olympic Games. They built the gym, which supports the ROTC, and it handles just about everything down in Southern High. The auditorium was built for the fine arts. And then you have the football field that was jointly used by everybody down south. And that's why I've just asked that on this amendment, and my colleagues were supportive, that in the event there's any money left over, that the next party would be the gym, then football field or the swimming pool, in whatever order they choose, whichever they can make, get the biggest bang for their dollar. Madam Speaker?
Thank you, Senator Sonaga Senior. Colleagues, the Sonaga Senior Amendment reads on page three, line 22 to 23, to amend subsection 79902, to read "within the Southern High School Auditorium, Gymnasium, Football Field, and Swimming Pool," in that order, and as long as it remains within that cap. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the Sonaga Senior Amendment? Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If the author will so yield, I just want to know how that amendment reconciles with the first lines of section 77902, which is titled "The Southern High School Auditorium." And that is specific to the purpose of this article being the repair and rehab of the auditorium, but it prioritizes with the word shall, the repair of the air conditioning or replacement of the air conditioning, rehabbing the molding. So how would that, how would this amendment tie into the specific objectives of the rehabilitation and repair of the air conditioning if we were to extend it to, say, the football field?
Senator Sonaga Senior, do you yield?
Yes. Madam Speaker, in the event, when they're working on the air condition or rehabilitation air condition, they find that it's a part that doesn't cost $500,000, the air condition costs $500,000, that's what I was told two years ago, and I know the price didn't change. Air condition was purchased from Carrier. I'm familiar with that company and what they were doing. And as we go down the line, and whatever mold or wood deterioration they have, if they don't, if they're fixed the auditorium and they're done, all I'm saying is that if there's any funds left, the next project will be the gym, then the football field and so forth. If there's no funds after the reset cap, then it's dead, it's over. There's nothing to move on unless we introduce another bill for that.
Thank you. Senator Torres, does that satisfy your point of inquiry?
I understand the point, but perhaps the amendment then needs to be amended because the whole gist of the bill is to repair the air conditioning. And so any spillover of funds to the football field or the swimming pool will not involve an air conditioning repair. So that's my point. Perhaps it should be, it should be, the amendment should be to the effect of any funds remaining, any funds remaining from the rehab maybe, because it's two totally different projects, is what I'm saying. So perhaps the amendment, I just, I just think that in some ways the amendment is, respectfully, I believe it's inappropriate to the intent of the bill. I understand any excess funds being used, but this is really a project specific to air conditioning, and I don't know how we can apply that to a football field or a swimming pool. So maybe...
Maybe, Madam Speaker, I can ask legal if we can get a short recess, we can see how we can word it to fit. If not, I will draw my amendment, but I, we can get a short recess?
I believe it can be worded, but I just don't think that the way that it's written is germane to the intent.
Okay. We will go into a short recess, and then we will come back with Senator Torres still having the floor. Thank you.
I'm Duncan Luna Sijos Mossi, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of Bill 269-35. Last year during this time, I did take a chance to visit the Southern High School to recruit some of their students to join our Legislative Public Policy Institute. And as I look back to when Southern High was first built, from my research, the home of the Dolphins, when it was first open, if I'm not mistaken, was one of the largest schools in the island, if not even just the island, but within the country. And the Dolphins proudly boasted the largest campus in the country. So, and it broke my heart to see the state that it is in. And as the previous speaker rose in the efforts of support, I too had the chance to frequent the auditorium a lot and have a lot of the gifted and talented students and other nonprofits perform in that auditorium. And it literally breaks my heart to see that it literally should be worked on and repaired. And I want to say, Madam Speaker, I truly support public-private partnerships, whether it be for this Southern High, or for soccer fields, or even revitalizing the Harmon Industrial Park that has, I want you to know, Madam Speaker, that this has proven to work in our community. And this allows us to invest in our children and give them a facility that they rightfully deserve and something that we can be very proud of. And for these reasons, Madam Speaker, I would like to commend the good author for this measure. And I hope that my colleagues too stand here today to support this measure as well. And hopefully he'll give me the opportunity to be a part of this sponsorship. But in that area, Madam Speaker, I just, I rise in support of 269-35 COR, the home of the Dolphins, truly deserve to have this happen for them. Sign him off.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Sonaga Senior, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the intent of this legislation. Like a previous speaker, I've had the opportunity to use the Southern High Auditorium for the performing arts. And even at that time, we were putting together a production of about 50 or 60 individuals. And we had set our dates, we had sold tickets. And then at the last, you know, just a few days before our opening night, we found out that we might have to cancel because of issues with the air conditioner. And this was many years ago, over seven or eight years ago. And so the fact...
be held up for months or longer because somebody is off island. So those were very important reassurances, I believe, for us to all hear. So there were many parts to that to the hearing. And we did also get to hear that the Department of Interior is being able to provide funding for that facilities capital improvement plan, which is important because of course, the superintendent and all of us, we care about all the schools and we want to get them all moving along. So with that, I do have one amendment and I appreciate the author for taking the time to work with me. I'm not sure if it's been uploaded yet, but essentially, I can just mention what the amendment is. Essentially, I had asked a couple of questions about a maintenance plan. And while there were statements alluding to a maintenance plan, I want to assure all of us that these good intentions and this good public-private partnership and this up to a million dollars is an investment that is well thought out. So it appears that they've done good thinking thus far, but I think the assurance of having a maintenance plan in place will also be very important. And so it is still on its way, but it would be on page seven, line 10, to have it say that the tax credits authorized under this act shall not be authorized until the approval of the designs for repair and rehabilitation, comma, as well as a long-term maintenance plan, comma, of the Southern High School Auditorium. So, like I said, that is still on its way. If you want me to earmark that and move on to other speakers?
I will earmark that. Senator Titan, Senator Lee, on the motion.
Sidoos Maasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the intent of this legislation. Like a previous speaker, I've had the opportunity to use the Southern High Auditorium for the performing arts. And even at that time, we were putting together a production of about 50 or 60 individuals. And we had set our dates, we had sold tickets. And then at the last, you know, just a few days before our opening night, we found out that we might have to cancel because of issues with the air conditioner. And this was many years ago, over seven or eight years ago. And so the fact that we're still in this situation now, I think it is important for us to look to other solutions and try to figure out ways that we can make this happen for not just the Southern High community, but our entire island as a whole. It's a really beautiful facility and I think that there's a lot of talent on Guam and we would have, to be able to have a venue to showcase that is really special. Madam Speaker, I do have a question for the author, if you would yield.
Please state your question.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be able to place on the record, for those who might be watching, does this bill require an open, transparent, and fair bidding process? And is the author able to reference a provision in the bill that speaks to the procurement of these services that we're discussing?
Senator Jim, would you like to use Senator Lee's question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the question. If we refer to page five of the bill, regulatory oversight and approval of marketing, the Department of Education should have the regulatory oversight and authority to approve the repair rehabilitation plan of Southern High School Auditorium pursuant to this article, along with the selection of contributors based on criteria established by the Guam Service Agency, GSA. The responsibilities should be extended to, but may not be limited to, obtaining price quotations pursuant to the applicable procurement rules, regulations, and laws, along with the program marketing. And that last sentence was also based on the recommendation of GIDEA. So GDOE is involved in it, GSA is involved, GIDEA is involved, and eventually at the end for the tax credit, DRT is involved as well. Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Lee, does that help?
Yes, Sidoos Maasi, Madam Speaker. And again, I think the author of this measure, I think it will go a long way to assist, again, once, not just the Southern High School community, but our entire community as a whole. Sidoos Maasi.
One pubetsu. So Minority Leader, you're recognized on the main motion.
Madam Speaker, I want to speak on the amendment, so I'll just wait until the amendment of Senator Augustine's amendment.
Okay, thank you, Minority. Anyone else? Anyone else on the main motion? If not, we're going to take a moment to recess. Nina Trenta cinco, not less than two in Guam, is back from recess. I'm going to go ahead and acknowledge Senator Therese Terlahi on the main motion, and I think she has an amendment. So Senator Therese, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And yeah, I rise in support of this bill. I think we've all seen, it's kind of like a cycle of repairs to Southern High and then it's unusable again. And unfortunately, yeah, we really do need to stop that. It really very much disrupts the students and their abilities to excel. The entire Southern Guam is attending this high school and I think they deserve every benefit that we can bring to that school. So this fine arts auditorium is actually very unique in our schools and not every school has one. And it, you know, was a huge promise to, you know, bring our children an opportunity that they did not have at the time. And we are still very constrained with opportunities in that regard. I remember when Inet Nengef Pago not too long ago, you know, announced they were launching it again. And so we've seen it again and again. But yeah, so I support tax credits to get this fixed if it hasn't been fixed through the efforts of, you know, GDOE. And, you know, we are allocating our territorial educational facilities funds towards our educational facilities. That's our real property taxes. And so I just wanted to find out, and it was brought up at the hearing, so one of the issues that was brought up was the maintenance plan. And so I'm glad that that's, there's an amendment on that by my colleague. The other thing that was brought up at the hearing was, you know, how does this fit into GDOE's master plan for facilities? There's supposed to be, you know, they have existing master plans or priorities. I guess I just wanted to know, if we're looking at GDOE and their priorities for facilities, is this one of them? Or is it just the only one that they needed $1 million for? Because we have heard PTAs complaining about other issues at the schools, not complaining, but bringing them up to our attention, you know, that, and I know that they've made some repair, but I just, I just wanted to know. I know that they have a long-term plan assessment and update being planned by Army Corps of Engineers, but on their current priorities list, where does this fall? The author would yield.
Thank you, Senator Therese. Senator Jim, would you like to yield?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the question from my colleague. Just like to refer to the Superintendent of Education, Mr. John Fernandez, a letter that he wrote on December 2nd. I'll just highlight a couple, which I believe will address the question. First off, that the Southern High School Auditorium is just one of many capital improvement projects requiring attention. As the committee is aware, GDOE is currently managing the design of a new Simon Sanchez High School, which will eventually be financed under a municipal lease with a private developer as authorized by law. Once Simon Sanchez High School is addressed, four other GDOE six high schools will be maintained under a public-private lease agreement, leaving George Washington High School and the Southern High School as the two largest schools in need of continued maintenance and renovations. So there's a need after he addresses the capital improvement in the priorities as Mr. Fernandez has stated. Also, in his letter, as I read, as part of the effort to improve GDOE facilities, GDOE announced yesterday that the U.S. Department of Interior, of Insular Affairs, has authorized and is providing support to initiate and complete a school facility master plan, which was referred to by the question. It's the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, on behalf of US DOI, has contracted with HHF planners out of Hawaii to work with GDOE to gather demographics, enrollment, and facility data needed to begin the planning work. The contractor will be working with GDOE to engage stakeholders in setting priorities, identifying challenges and opportunities for facility improvements, and developing a plan to address facility needs over the next 10 years. HHF planners will also build off of the 1999 and 2010 capital facilities plan, as well as the USA CE 2013 deferred maintenance study. The school master plan is expected to be completed by November 2021. And once this master plan is completed, we hope that we have made further progress in identifying funding to support the implementation of this facility plan. Otherwise, we will need to continue to explore supportive, creative alternatives such as Bill 269. I think, Madam Speaker, Mr. Fernandez did address his priorities and the schools, where they're at now, and that they still, it leaves George GW and Southern High School some attention. They don't have it right now for these two high schools. And they have this long-term goal as well, and they're going to have this wonderful plan. However, what Mr. Fernandez is pointing out, we still have no dedicated funding for this awesome plan, which won't be completed until November of 2021. So, and that's why they support alternatives such as Bill 269 in the meantime to address this. And hopefully, as things get better and we overcome our pandemic, we can then find permanent sourcing to support the master plan of GDOE. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Therese, you still have the floor to sit up?
Thank you very much. And yeah, I thank him. I have the letter from DOE. My issue is that, you know, they're referring to prior studies and future studies. And I just wanted to know right now on their table, you know, if there is another more urgent need at Southern High for the students, especially, you know, for their safety. And of course, we need to take care of all of them, but I just wanted to make sure or put that on the record somewhere that, because it's not. And I think one of my colleagues had asked at the public hearing for that, for their current list of maintenance projects that they want to do immediately, but I don't see that in the committee report. And just as one of my colleagues had asked for a maintenance plan and that was not provided prior to the bill being reported out of committee. So I just wanted to see those needs, put them in front of us so that when we make this decision, we are, you know, very conscious that we are prioritizing this auditorium over every other need of Southern High. And I'm hope, yeah, I didn't get a chance to call the principal, but I'm assuming that they are, they are on board, otherwise we would have heard from them. But yeah, I just want to, it should, I just, it should be in front of us that, you know, when we make this decision. And again, so I support this, this mechanism at this time. This cannot be, I don't think, the mechanism for all future projects, or as BBMR says, we are not going to be able to run the government of Guam. We have got to hone in on that educational facilities funds, our real property taxes, and where they are being used and how we can, you know, ensure that the intent of dedicating that funding source to DOE is being met. So I have one, I like that, you know, included in the bill on page five was that the construction and professional services and equipment, materials, and furnishings shall be competitively procured. And that should be the case. And so in addition to the other section where it says, you know, the GDOE shall comply with all procurement rules, regulations, and laws, I'm satisfied that, you know, they, this should be a fair process. So my only issue with the bill at this moment is on page six, line sevens through 11. So giving a tax credit is one program. And on line seven through 11, they start talking about another benefit, if you will, of allowing those who have received tax credits to put their signs up on the walls of this auditorium. And I would just suggest we remove this provision right now. There is a whole other program for DOE facilities that allows for contributions in exchange for putting, you know, advertisements on the wall or your name of your company. And so I think they're already getting the benefit of this tax credit and it's a mutual benefit. And, you know, if they want to avail of the other program to put their names on the wall, that that should be a different, just leave it separately and leave it at that, Madam Speaker. I think, I think that would make this program consistent with all the other credit programs that we are doing. For example, we don't allow them to advertise along the entire, you know, New Harmon Road, that they were the ones who contributed to it. It's free, you know, I mean, that's another benefit that, for the government of Guam to procure.
On the TMT amendment, are there anyone wishing to speak? Senator Joseph Augustine, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this amendment, as I read it. And the reason for that is because the Board of Education does have policy that governs signage. You contribute, you get to put up. By getting a tax break, you're getting a tax break. You're really getting paid. There's another form of getting paid through taxes. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the amendment? If not, are there any objections to this? Any objections, seeing or hearing? None. Motion carries. Senator Therese, you still have a couple of minutes.
Thank you, yes. And so I just want to again say, I support that we are going to repair the air conditionings in the Southern High School Fine Arts Theater. I wish that we are going to come up with more to repair other things at Southern High. And I, you know, I want the students at Southern High to feel the way we all felt when that school first opened, the pride and the joy and, you know, how the Southern residents were able to feel that they were valued and that we valued education so much. And so I just want to rise in support of this bill and just acknowledge that we still have a lot of work to do. Sidoos Maasi.
Thank you. With that being said, I'll go back to the amendment as proffered by Senator Joseph Augustine. You're recognized on your amendment. I know that everybody has a copy. It was transmitted early.
Madam Speaker, that's, it's already on the drive. I've spoken with legal. They said it's germane. It's okay where it's at. It's just a matter of the body not accepting it. And we can move on on that.
On the amendment, are there anyone wishing to speak? Minority Leader, you're recognized.
Sidoos Maasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the amendment. I think the previous speaker mentioned the issues prior to, you know, being a senator when he was sitting at the board and seeing, you know, sometimes the money gets diverted for something else. Though I'd like to see this amendment actually, you know, diverting to the classrooms or places that are really in need. But, you know, that being said, I mean, I have, I feel that $1 million, which by the way, was mentioned during the public hearing when I attended that, that probably would take up just the air conditioning alone, you know, by a new type of mechanics in it. They talk about the cooling system, the water cooling, and that needs, it's obsolete going into something more efficient, more energy-efficient. So I don't think that there will be any funding left over, but then again, I truly believe that, you know, whatever funding that goes there, it should be stayed into the structure of Southern High School. So I just wanted to say I support the amendment and appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing? None. Motion carries. Thank you, Senator Sinogstein. Senator Marsh Titan, you are recognized on your amendment.
Sina Maasi Maskehalu. I have this amendment and I had just one question for the author as well. So on the amendment, it is line 11, page 7, to amend section four of the bill to read. Section four, effective date. The act shall become effective upon enactment. However, the tax credits authorized under this act shall not be authorized until the approval of the design for the repair and rehabilitation, and this is the inclusion, as well as a long-term maintenance plan of the Southern High School Auditorium, and then to allow Legislative Council to make tax then to allow Legislative Council to make technical corrections. So as speaker after speaker has mentioned here today, and they, they stated it very well, I thought, that Southern, for all of its hopes and dreams and aspirations, it's become a cycle of repairs and a cycle of loss and a cycle of just disrepair. And, and of course, that was never the intention. So here, I appreciate the proactivity that was here in the bill where it says it will not be authorized until the approval of the designs for the repair and rehabilitation. I think that at this point, we as leaders need assurance that if we're willing to commit a million dollars, which is no small commitment, then having the assurance that there will be action, such as the design for the repair and rehabilitation. But I think just as importantly, assurance that there is going to be a long-term maintenance plan so that in a certain number of years, we don't find ourselves at the same point that it was a million dollars at a very difficult time to set aside, be applied there, give those students hopes and dreams again, but to not have it be carried out. So I was very assured, as I mentioned, where they are thinking very differently and taking all those lessons learned about what didn't work with this last cooling system for the auditorium. But I do think the commitment of a maintenance plan is also very important as that assurance for us, the community and those students. And I ask for my colleague's support. Sidhu Smasi.
Thank you. On the amendment, Senator Jim, you are recognized on the Marsh Titel amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the amendment. I can see the importance of this, but, but I also want to express just a little history on, on the original system that Southern High School had, which caused the problems and which eventually became outdated. So much so outdated that there was no company here to repair the system because that type of system was no longer in use, and it was difficult to find repair parts and the maintenance workers to hand, to handle it. That's the chilled water system. That's the, if, you can see the water running down these chillers that are usually on top of the roofs of these big buildings. And if you, if you park near one that's on the roof there, your windshield will probably get wet, and so would you when you walk out of your car if you parked downstairs. So that, that chilling system became outdated, and that's when it really required endless maintenance, clogging of the system, old, old, it's an old material, even the panel control box is old, old material. But what I do agree with the author of the amendment, that a maintenance plan is necessary. However, that using the term a long-term maintenance plan could require some adjustments in how, the type of air conditioning units that would be purchased. The cost of a, something, anything long-term is usually, has some greater outlaying in cost. For example, if we short, if we require a long-term maintenance plan, and we may have, where we may be restricting G D O E's authority and selection when this bid comes up of what type of units could they, could they look at. I, I think a maintenance plan is important, but if it could affect the number of units that they get, it could affect the type of BTUs they can get, it, it could affect the entire bidding process, not because there's a maintenance plan in effect. And logically, a maintenance plan should be part of the bidding process too. And, and there's nothing in here that spells out that it shouldn't. But if we say the word long-term, and I'd just like the authors of the amendment to possibly reconsider, but instead of saying the, the word long-term, that we just use maintenance plan, strictly that, repair, or, sorry, let me just find the exact bill So, so basically, if the amendment, and I request this from the author of the amendment, instead of, as well as a long-term maintenance plan, to include a maintenance plan and allow G D O E, when in the bidding process, to determine the overall package that they receive from whatever bidders wish to do this, and, and let them determine is, is five years considered for them a long-term? We're, we're not even necessarily specifying how long, long-term is, but a better, one bidder may say, I'll give you 10 years. One bidder may say, I'll give you the warranty of the product, two years. One bidder would say, I want to re-bid for this project in the next 10 years, and I'll continue to maintain it because, for whatever reasons. But I, but I'm just a little concerned if we use the word long-term in here, that, that would, that would have to focus on that maintenance plan rather than focusing on the layout, the design, the number of BTUs, the new products or, or so forth, because they had to balance out the cost when getting the system. And, and as we heard from G D O E, they anticipate, or they project approximately a million dollars for that. So I like the word maintenance. I disagree with the word long-term, and I asked the author to reconsider. Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair.
So Senator Jim, would you, is that proffering an amendment to her amendment to delete the word as well as, and to just put, to include?
Yes, if I can ask legal's help for, for that, to, to implement that, please, Madam Speaker, yes.
I will, I will.
If I could provide a point of information, this may address this concern.
I'm going to take a moment's recess so that you two can confer. A moment's recess.
Imena Trenta Cincunales, La Tura en Guam is back from recess. Senator Marsh Titino, you have the floor.
Asigna Maasi Maskehalu. So with the amendment that we were speaking of on line 11, page 7, we had come to an understanding that my intention all along was for the Guam Department of Education itself to have a maintenance plan. Because whether one has a contract, whether one is doing this internally, it's just important that you have or they have a plan for this. If a contract ends, they need to have a plan in place as to how to move next. If the contract is not living up to its performance, they need to be making sure that they are managing it well. So our agreement between the author and myself was to have an amendment to the amendment and have it read, as well as a GDOE long-term maintenance plan. So that it's clear that it's not anyone else's responsibilities, but the Department of Education's to develop this long-term maintenance plan.
Senator, you would have to move to withdraw your previous amendment first. You have to withdraw it and re-enter the one that was proffered. We will take a moment's recess. Imena Trenta Cincunales, La Tura en Guam is back from recess. Senator Marsh Titino, you are recognized.
Asigna Maasi Maskehalu. So what we have done instead is place both amendments on one page. So I will withdraw the one from line 11, page 7, and instead ask my colleagues to open up the one-
Senator, let me go ahead and address the motion to a-
For withdrawing.
On the previous amendment, on the motion to withdraw, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Marsh Titino, on your new amendment.
Asigna Maasi. So on this one, it is B269 KMT, line 21, P5. The amendment now reads, page 5, line 21. "To amend subsection 79908 of the bill to read, 77908 Regulatory Oversight, Approval and Marketing. The Guam Department of Education shall have the regulatory oversight and the authority to approve the repair and rehabilitation plan of the Southern High School Auditorium pursuant to this article, along with the selection of the contributors based on criteria established by the Guam Services Agency. The responsibility shall be extended to, but may not be limited to, obtaining price quotations pursuant to the applicable procurement rules, regulations and laws, along with the program marketing." The new section amended here is, "Apart from the repair and rehabilitation plan of the Southern High School Auditorium, GDOE shall develop a long-term maintenance plan for the auditorium." Then on page 7, line 11. "To amend section 4 of the bill to read." Section 4, effective date. "The act shall become effective upon enactment. However, the tax credits authorized under this act shall not be authorized until the approval of the designs for the repair and rehabilitation of the Southern High School Auditorium and the development of a long-term maintenance plan for the same." Yes, so I believe I've made the points already, and I look forward to any comments or questions.
Thank you, Senator Titino. On the amendment, are there any one wishing to speak? If not, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Are there anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, Senator Moylan, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to my colleagues for the discussion and questions. I think we developed the bill even stronger than before, and we all want the same goal, to help the Southern High School and the children, and get the auditorium back to the jewel it once was. And hopefully, this bill can start at that and can do much more from there. I also want to thank the committee chair for moving this bill forward and allowing us further to get this bill heard on session agenda as the last part of one of our 35th legislature doings. Madam Speaker, at this time, I also wish to include some co-sponsors that wish to be added to the bill. Let me see, Senator, sorry, I had some listing. Senator Teresa Lahy, Madam Speaker yourself, Senator Torres, Senator Munya, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, Senator Joe St. Augustine, Senator Castro, Senator Shelton, Senator Rigel, and Senator Pedro Terlahi as well to be added as co-sponsors to the bills. And I also wish to thank my colleagues for this, and Beba, home of the Dolphins. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hear- Senator?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. No objections, but I should have been included on that list, I believe.
My apologies, Madam Speaker. Please, to include Senator Sabina Perez. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On that motion, without any objections, seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Moylan, if you can just give the list to the clerk, Madam Clerk, so she has the order. Thank you, Senator Perez. On the motion, Senator Moylan, to push it to the voting file, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Our request that bill number 269, as amended by committee, be moved to a third reading voting file, Madam Speaker.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Colleagues, I'm going to, at this time, recognize Senator Perez. Senator Perez, can you please explain your motion, please?
This is Maasi, Madam Speaker. I move to reconsider the actions of the body regarding Bill 185- I move to reconsider the actions of the body regarding bill 185-35 as substituted, to address some, to proffer amendments to address the concerns from the Department of Agriculture.
Are there any objections for that one? Vice Speaker Nelson, I'm going to go ahead and acknowledge you for a point of-
Sorry, Madam Speaker, this is non-debatable, right?
No, it's not debatable. What if you have a point of information for-
No, I just wanted to ask a question, but I don't want to overstep the rules. It's fine, I'm sorry.
Thank you. On that motion, without any objections, seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Paris, I understand you have a couple of amendments that we're supposed to address Department of Agriculture's concern that you worked with legal. Can you please proceed? You are recognized.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. So the first amendment I would like to proffer, I don't have access to it, but it's, okay, so, so Department, Director Chelsa Munya Bract had recommended some amendments, and one of the amendments was to include trained animal control officers to be, to authorize them to euthanize animals. And this amendment, I believe, is on page 18, section 70.10.12D of the bill, and it reads, quote, "Euthanasia shall be performed only by a licensed veterinarian, trained animal control officers, or an employer agent in accordance of subsection 121906 of Article 19." And I would like to allow legal counsel to make technical corrections.
On that amendment, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Paris, on your last amendment.
So the last amendment addresses the first point, and the Department of Ag is, would like the flexibility to be able to manage the populations for aggressive animals, invasive species, inclusive of cats and dogs. And so the amendment that would address this is on line 1, page 18. Sorry, is that right? Maybe it's not the correct line, but it's on page 18. It's section, subsection 70.10.11. Subsection-
I apologize. Majority Leader, do you have a point of information for me?
Just, just so we can all be on the same page, can you just direct us to where the amendments are now?
Yes, thank you.
And where the new bill is at? The, whatever, because I understand that there were amendments perhaps during the floor, so where's the new bill? And then the amendments as well? Thank you.
I apologize. Majority Leader, we are on bill 185-35COR, and this amendment now is on page 18, line 1, if I'm not mistaken? Yes.
Yes.
And it's been uploaded, and it's been uploaded? One moment, please. We'll take a moment's recess. Senator Paris, can you please read the amendment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. So the amendment starts on line 1, page 18 of the substitute bill, and it reads, "A, subsection HA of this section shall not pertain to cats or dogs, except as authorized by the Director of Department of Agriculture." And it strikes out, "During such time as a governor declares a public health emergency in relation to cats or dogs. And such disinfection efforts are done in accordance with accepted practices of veterinary medicine and procedures approved by the council." So again, this would allow the flexibility for the Department of Ag to help with the stray population, should they need, should they deem the need for aggressive animals.
Thank you, Senator Paris. On the amendment, Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, as we were trying to find it, it's on page 18, to amend section 70.10.12D of the bill? Is that, is that what we're? No, I'm wrong here.
It's to A subsection H, H as in Harry, and 8, number 8.
But we're on page 18, right? I'm trying to find it on this.
We're on line 1.
Line 1, page 18?
The beginning, yes.
Line 1, page 18. I'm trying to find it so I can see what it looks like, but I see, I see two page 18. One says line 7, the other one just says page 18. And if I look up on page 18 alone-
Point of information? It's a-
18 was already passed, sir. So now we're just going to the top, line 1. It's going to be on line 1.
Point of information?
Say your point of information, Senator Paris.
So for the, for my colleagues, it's section 70.10.11, under defenses and exceptions. And so if you go to subsection G, sorry, G8A, so that's where the change is occurring.
Is it G or H? Because it says H on your amendment.
Yeah, so the placement is, I'm just trying to give the context. So it is G8A.
You know, I can see the bill, but I can't see what the amendment is.
It's sub item A is where the amendment is going to go to. So right on, on page 18, right on the top, it's line 1. It says subsection H8. Can you see that?
Madam Speaker, when we look on the drive, you've got a word document of the bill, then you've got a PDF file of the bill, then you've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 amendments. Which one is it? If we say page 18, there is two items on this document, and I don't, I don't see it further down, even further.
So it's B185SFP, L1P18PDF.
So the amendment is, take out the governor, right?
It's to delete also during such time. You got it, Senator? Thank you. On the amendment, on the amendment, Minority Leader, I will recognize you.
Sisus Maasi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity, and I didn't speak on the other amendment, but both amendments that were sent to us via email by the Director made complete sense, and especially this one here in particular, because it seems like the only time they can address these circumstances where they need to address the population of the dogs, or not just on spatering or neutering, but it, it says here that they can only do it during a declaration of a state of emergency. And the intent, I think, for this legislation was to do it throughout, you know, even when we're not in a state of emergency. So it's a very simple amendment that does that, to allow the department throughout the year to address the issue of the stray dog and cat on Guam. So I stand in support of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Minority Leader. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? If not, are there any objections? You have an objection, or you, would you like to speak? Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to speak.
Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you. I, I don't know, I must have missed it, but if I, may I state a point of inquiry for the sponsor?
Yes, you can. State your question, please.
Thank you. If the sponsor could just explain the amendment in a little more, a little bit more simpler-
Thank you, Senator. Vice Speaker. Now, Senator Paris, would you like to yield to that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. So like the retiring speaker was saying, the only time that, so cats and dogs, well, according to the subsection, the only time that cats and dogs can be euthanized is when there's a declaration of a public health emergency by a governor. And in the email that was sent by Director Chelsa Bract, you know, they want the flexibility to be able to, you know, handle the population of strays, should the animal be aggressive. And, and so they, they want it to be allowed that flexibility, rather than wait for an outright public health emergency. And so what this amendment does, it gives them this ability to do so, but under the, in accordance with accepted practices of veterinary medicine. So it's, it would have to be carefully deliberated and implemented.
Thank you, Senator Paris. Vice Speaker?
Yes, that was very clear. Thank you very much to the sponsor. Just another point of inquiry, if, so this is discussing about euthanasia for, you know, with the practices of veterinary medicine, but what if, for example, the dog is on someone else's property, and it's been raiding its livestock, or chickens, or attacking another dog on their property? Is, will that negatively impact the person who perhaps will have to shoot the dog?
I will ask, Senator Paris, would you like to yield to that question?
So this amendment doesn't deal with that. That's, that's irrelevant to this amendment.
Say that again. I apologize, I didn't hear you.
That point of inquiry is irrelevant to this particular amendment. Oh, disinvested, oh, so, yeah, that's a different question.
I'll give you a moment's recess. Iminetren Taisinko Naleslatu Rangguahan is back from recess. Senator, Vice Speaker Nelson, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I didn't know that you could not ask a question a certain way for, for a certain section that the amendment's being put in. I don't, I didn't know that, or we could declare that. But during the recess, it was explained to me, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the amendment, are there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Paris, to place it back in its place.
Sisus Maasi, Madam Speaker. I move to place bill number 185-35COR as substituted on the floor and further amended in the voting file, and to retain its place.
To retain its place. On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. I'm going to address Majority Leader. You are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to motion that we recess and meet Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. for voting.
On that motion, we will be in recess till 10 o'clock Wednesday for voting.